Will you bow your head with me? Lord, may the time never come that we don't first stop as we approach you and say thank you. There's no end to the many blessings that you've given each one of us, and in the midst of a world that's interminable, Lord, would you give us peace through your Son? Thank you for life itself, for the measure of the health that we need to fulfill our callings, for sustenance, for our friendships. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the freedom that we have today together here and to speak with you without fear. Thank you for loving us from your boundless and gracious nature. Lord, in your word, you tell us that the government rests upon your shoulders, that there's no end to the increase of your kingdom. You said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you've established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I want to pray tonight for our mayor, the various levels of city officials that are here, and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant to them to have the wisdom that is from above to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times and what we place here tonight. A sense of the welfare and the true needs of the people of Dennison. Lord, we ask for a keen thirst for justice and rightness, and then the courage to stand up for it even in difficult times and places. We ask for confidence in what is good and fitting. We ask tonight for the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. Lord, we ask for personal peace and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda that's set before them tonight, and I ask that you would give each person here the assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Dennison. I ask it all in the precious name of Jesus. Amen.
I would like to read this to the light in the United States of America and into the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me, Agenda Item Number Two, Consent Agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to vote for consent.
Second. Motion in second, all in favor by saying aye. All in. In hopes like signs. Motion carries. The council will now go to Agenda Item Four, I think it's four A, or B, sorry, the public hearing on the Katy Trail. That way maybe if one in the gallery can not answer, just the rest of the meeting. So we'll go straight to the Katy Trail, Agenda Item, Mr. Park.
I was hoping you'd bring that too, you asked me to come forward, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor, council, staff is excited to be here at this point today. We talked about this at the last council dinner, I was briefly go over the details of the trail. We are talking about Katy Trail. It is proposed to be 2.64 miles in length, beginning at West Daye, going south along the MKT right-of-way, which we're in contact with purchase, to just south of Spur 503, specifically to the Lisa and Park intersection. It will be connecting to Waterloo Park, and will continue south through some progress development to FM 691. That will be in future phases of the project. We did discuss some various pedestrian bridges. We're still investigating those crossings and what might be the spread of those intersections and amenities. I would like to note that we have the current director of our NPO here, which is planning on speaking a little bit about the project, and previously the approval of the plan for pedestrian and bicycle routes through Sherman and Dennison. We did discuss the business through FHWA funding, Minister Andrew Teck's side. Project is being put together as a nomination for funding, and we definitely could add his name for it. And staff today is asking for y'all's approval to submit that nomination for the project.
Thank you, Al. Before we open the public hearing, just kind of want to just talk back us big picture of the proceedings tonight. So what's before the council tonight is not whether or not the council's going to allocate dollars to this project, or whether or not the project will go forward. What we are doing tonight is simply having a public hearing and then taking action on whether or not we are going to submit grant applications. So it's just two different actions. Tonight, the council will make a determination whether or not we will submit for the federal grant, and then once we get selected, if we happen to be a recipient of those dollars, the council will then at that point determine if we want to engage staff, to engage design, engineering, and actually go forward with the project. So again, just want to make that very clear as we get into the public hearing tonight. Also, if we would, I know several people have asked to speak, and there's several more there. You can go ahead and bring those up if you would. If you don't have something that's new information, what we typically do in meetings like this, if you can have one or two or three of you speak for an entire neighborhood, that's helpful. And if they don't get all your points across, then please, I'll call upon you and you'll be able to come up. So with that, we'll open the public hearing, and we'll start with, what was I thinking? We'll start with Wayne Manning from Woodland Park. If you would, please come forward.
We want you ahead and say, I'm gonna go ahead and defer to one of the other neighbors that are in here, with my same information.
That'd be great, sir. Okay. And who was that?
Justin.
Justin? Okay. And actually, Justin, before you come up, Carl Wethenbaum, if you will come up. Carl's a staff member for the Sherman-Dennison NPO, and works with transportation, whether it's highway transportation, or I guess transportation of all types throughout the Sherman-Dennison metropolitan area. One of 15, I believe, in the state NPOs.
Twenty-five.
One of 25 NPOs. One of the smaller ones, but he represents that organization.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner, Project, the opportunity to speak. I'm just here to express the support of the Metropolitan Plan Organization. This trail is in fact one of the backbones of the plan that was adopted by the NPO back in October. It was part of our long-range plan, our Metropolitan Transportation Plan. It is a stand-alone document, but this was a backbone. I believe you have the maps in front of you. It is a backbone connector between Dennison and Sherman, and we fully support this moving forward. It's one of the better uses of abandoned railroads. Multi-use trails such as these tend to add to economic development, add to land values that, as they go through, they also provide obviously a very safe form of recreational recreation for families. So I'm just here to express the support of the NPO. You do have a letter from the chairman of the NPO stating support for this project itself.
Thank you, Carl. Any questions for Carl? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One other thing before we get into other comments. What I've also asked is our assistant manager, Judd Rex, to take notes of any what we would call frequently asked questions. The purpose of that is that if the council moves to go forward with the grant application and were to receive that, then all the concerns of the public hearing tonight would be, it would give staff time to address those and give the council all the information that we need to make a decision down the road should we get to that point. So he'll be recording your concerns throughout the evening and in hopes of producing a document that will answer all those in due time. So with that, I'll, if you will come forward. Name and address, please, for the record.
My name's Justin Hall, 1819 Woodland Park Drive, Dennison, Texas, 75020. My name's Justin. I live in the Woodland Park Edition, Phase Two. We're in the cul-de-sac area that runs north and south along the proper Katy Trail. I came together with a piece of paper here, got a few points that we as a neighborhood came up with, starting with, we believe that the Katy Trail's gonna bring in cases of vandalism, littering, theft, burglary, drug activity, trafficking, possible kidnapping. We have approximately 11 kids in our neighborhood within a 200-yard stretch, ages from one to 12. They play along the abandoned railroad quite a bit. Real close to Spur 503, probably a half mile as roadblocks. Kind of a main thoroughfare to get to Highway 75. I just believe that that's gonna open up opportunity. I hate to think about it, but kidnapping, you know, the trail's 2.6 miles, it leads from Waterloo to Spur 691. And from Park, or Spur 503 to 691 is pretty remote as far as the distance between the Spur and 691. I'm not sure how well it's gonna be controlled by officers. I work for the City Department of Environment, and I'm at Station 3. It's located at 141782. It's close to Conroe Park, the east entrance. And I can't tell you how many times I've came back from a 911 call in the middle of the night, whether it's 10:00 PM or 2:00 AM, 4:00 AM, passing cars coming from, going to or leaving the park parking lot. And what are they up to? They're up to no good, you know. Sherman PD, they do a good job of monitoring, but it's still bringing in those groups of people, you know. And as a neighborhood, we feel that it's only gonna be bad for us as homeowners with the trail directly affecting us behind our house. For instance, I put up a, it costs $2,100 for a wrought iron fence. The whole reason for it was to look out back to the east due to the scenery being wooded and no neighbors. Now we're gonna constantly have people in behind the house. That's a concern that we have. That's the reason why we had to do a wooded property fence, you know, keep that view open. We have neighbors in cul-de-sac that have dogs, and they do bar quite a bit. I know some that get cases of call-ins, you know, and the dog's getting too loud. That's gonna create that problem. A few other things that I have questions about is the right-of-way for the railroad. What exactly we can maintain? I've done a pretty good job of maintaining the area behind my house, from the property line down to the railroad, keeping it clean, brush, grass, up to plate saw it, put in a little trailer Spur one, and things like that. I was curious on what we can actually maintain if there's 25 foot from our property line and an additional 25 foot to the center of the railroad. I was curious on the exact measurements there.
Let me go ahead and answer that. I would have to defer to the staff on any specifics, but obviously, I mean, anything that's on your property is still your property in that area, and anything that's in the public right-of-way is public right-of-way.
Okay.
So as far as specifically, will we enter, not necessarily right now, but to this of the staff, I'm showing your specific parcel.
Okay. Other questions that we have is, which I think you addressed earlier, is the two bridges that are along the route. Safety concerns entering Flowers, entering Lloyd Lake, going underneath the overpass at Spur 503. Will there be any type of lighting? What will the city do as far as being our best friend behind our property when this trail comes in? Will that be providing fencing, some type of landscape, bushes, whether red tip, I think is what they're called? Will there be park benches, things like that? I think that's pretty much it. I've come together with a list of homeowners' signatures and agressives that are not in favor of us. I don't know if I can leave that.
Yeah, if you would, give it to Karen, and she'll actually carry it. She'll actually pass that around.
I'll leave this whole copy with them. It's kind of our points.
Sorry.
I believe that did. I mean, that's our concern, with the trail.
Judd, did you get your name?
Yeah, I think we got all the questions there. I'll look it over just to make sure.
And Kyle, where's Kyle? Go ahead and come back forward, and I just wanted you to address a couple of questions there. Question number one would be, what, along the trail, what, I guess in the numbers that have already been, that are gonna be submitted, what type of services that, what type of amenities are along the way, like benches and stuff like that? What is, I guess from a high level to best knowledge as of today, of course, that has to be finalized way down the road, but speaking from a very high level of that.
Trail surface will be concrete, and the minimum trail width will be 10 feet. In some locations, it'll go up to 12 feet, you know, just vary on design parameters. As far as amenities, we'll have trash bins, pet waste, etc.
Are y'all having trouble here in the back? Go steps to the microphone, please.
Trail surface will be concrete. The trail minimum width will be 10 feet, and the sections will be 12 feet wide, and that's based on design parameters. Trail amenities will be park benches in locations that have yet to be identified, and trash receptables, as well as pet waste receptables. Very simple questions for determined necessity.
And then from the potential crime standpoint and vandalism standpoint, we actually visited about that in the last meeting, I think from Chief Burge's perspective. We don't have those issues today at Waterloo in the back trail issue, but certainly something, I guess Chief, if you'll go ahead and come forward and speak to what y'all've done in other communities.
As I mentioned last meeting, I came from a community with an extensive trail system, parks tied in, and except for occasional vandalism in the restrooms, and those were more in a park setting than actual trail setting. Really just didn't have any issues with it. Something we addressed, would address here with bike patrol and our regular patrol, just become part of that. So at least my experience has been that haven't seen a large uptick in criminal activity. Certainly there are people that come in after hours, and if we see those people, we just, we run them off, but even that wasn't a major problem.
Chief, which community was that?
Mount Pleasant.
Okay. How long was their, was their trails system approximately?
Well, some of it had been in place before I got, I was there seven years. Some of it was in place before I got there, and then more was put in place after I got there. So, and I was not aware of any major issues with the system, the way it was set up before I got there, and certainly after I got there, it was just, we didn't see.
Do you know about the miles? How long duration the trail was?
Not actual miles. I think the overall master plan was including 12 miles.
Okay. Okay. And then the other thing, and I think it's critically important, and we don't have a clear answer today, is what you mentioned on the, where the cross thoroughfares, cross Lloyd Lake Road, etc. And in the design phase, if we get to that point, is where those type of things will be fleshed out by professional engineers and designers to ensure the safety.
Question I have on like the officers patrolling the area, you said by bike, is that gonna be something that they staff like full-time, where certain hour of the day, they ride the bikes through the trail and monitor it, or? I know a lot of the time, they hire overtime, you know, for the festivals and events that they play downtown.
I would think it's probably premature to know exactly how, how any of these teams would determine to staff, but obviously, just like any other area of the city, areas that need controlling, they probably won't test. Anybody else? Brent? Wait. And now, I mean, if something comes up to the course of our meetings tonight, and you wanna have an option, your question, you're not being shut off now, so.
Okay.
Thank you. James Thompson, 2804 Deer Meadow.
We currently.
A name and address.
Oh, so, James Thompson, 2804 Deer Meadow. We currently, we've been Dennison residents for 12 years, and sold a house off Morningside Circle by Waterloo, the end of last year. We're building a new home on Deer Meadow, which is gonna be right where the trail runs behind. I'm for, we are, our family's for the project. I have a 14-year-old freshman at the new high school that has a lot of friends in that neighborhood, that has let me know that when we finally get the house built, that she's gonna go play in the woods. So that's not a real good idea, I think. So the trail is gonna give them somewhere to go and have activities, and ride bikes, and be with the kids. There's a lot of kids in that neighborhood, and they play in the woods. I think if you put a trail in, then the adults will play in the woods, and if I see kids acting up, I'm gonna drop the hammer, so. I mean, I don't have a problem setting the kids straight. Plus, I need the exercise anyway, so. I think it's a good thing. I think Dennison's done a lot of good things the 12 years we've been in this town, and hopefully it'll move forward and do this, work for it, and it's, I'll probably be able to see it out my back door, so I don't have a problem with it.
G D Beam?
Hi, I'm G D Beam. I live at 901 Old State Lane, Dennison. And I've got a couple of notes in case I feel any bit, a little bit of history. I've been in Dennison 22 years, 14 of it I've lived on property that it owns, at a good distance, the MKT railroad. And I have a couple of concerns. I'm all for progress. I'm a big nature person. I know all about Waterloo. I know those trails, I'm on them. But I have to bring up, in the 14 years that I've been there, in the last five, I've had my fence cut with wire cutters, and the reason, I guess they were gonna be some shovels when I was at work. So I fixed that. I had my door kicked in. This is all coming from the MKT, and the reason is different than Waterloo. Waterloo are specific trails, but the MKT is a very wide base, and it's very remote, and it's a whole different type of activity, and there is activity down there because I've experienced it. I had my door kicked in by someone that came up from that wooded area. My dog saved me and chased that personal people, my big dog, back into those woods. Every single thing that has happened has come up from those woods, not from the front of the house, but from behind. As far as it being self-policing, if I put that, you don't police it at night. Now, maybe they'll have a patrol, that was a very good question, and they shouldn't be patrolling it constantly. I really agree with that young gentleman before that said that it opens us up to vandalism, because I've experienced it. I came home, I worked at Austin College, I came home in the middle of the night to find a man running out of the woods between me and my neighbor's house. Obviously, he was being pursued, I'm guessing, by the police. And a couple of years ago, I got up in the middle of the night and happened to look out my back window, my house sits up from the railroad, goes down in a bed like this, to see a fire. It was during a drought, and my heart went out because the people were just trying to stay warm, it was the middle of winter, but I had to call the fire department, and because I was afraid, quite honestly, there's houses all around there, they were gonna set that forest on fire. But the bed sits on like gravel, so it provided a space as opposed to trails like Waterloo, but this, it was attractive to transients, and I also know there's some drug activity down there, so. But my concerns are this. It's two-fold. One is safety. I'm concerned about burglary. I'm concerned about vandalism, because it does happen. And when we open that up, and I've seen it happen with it closed up, when it's opened up, I think what's going to happen, 99% of the people that use this trail are gonna be just good people wanting exercise and fun, but it's the 2% that concern me. I'm afraid that they'll come in the daytime, spec out the property, and come back at night. And so I have a concern about how possibly, since parts of this are really remote, how that can be policed. The second thing is trash. I'm at Waterloo a lot, I do my part, David Donahue does his, and I pick stuff up, but wherever you have public thoroughfares, you have, you know, refus. So here's my questions. What percentage of the 2.5 million will be used for maintenance and crime prevention? And what would that look like? And the other concern is how will a public thoroughfare affect my property values? Quite honestly, I think that there might be some problem with resale, because a lot of people just don't want a public thoroughfare, and all their brains has their property, so that's a concern as well. And I think that's it.
I think one of the things that you mentioned, I don't know, he wrote a couple of things down that were different from earlier, is the 2.5 million is, that's to build it, so none of that would be for any of the maintenance. Something that the council asked in the last meeting, and before making a decision at any point with any project to go forward, we've gotta know what are future costs associated with any project that we do, and so those will be fully embedded to make sure that it's something that would be obtainable within limits that our budget could stretch out. The only reason we're talking about this, when you look at community-wide priorities, you know, this has been something that people have asked for for a long time, but the ability to fund it, you know, in light of all the other priorities that our community has, it just doesn't make the list. What makes the discussion happen tonight is the potential of bringing down $2 million from the feds for only $500,000 of local money. So again, that's what brings it there, but I thought it was good for this audience to hear from a prioritization standpoint and an ongoing maintenance standpoint, those are very important issues.
And by the way, I would be pro anything, as long as we look at the whole big plan of how, it will bring extra maintenance, trash and stuff, which I really don't want back there. It's Woodland, it's beautiful. And the other part is somehow finding a way to police this, because the activity happens at night, and that's the biggest concern. I would think to have a monitor.
So, and please don't take my comment here as being argumentative, because that's not my heart on that, not my intention. Some of the things that you cited this evening have occurred without a trail.
Right.
And so basically, bad people do bad things, and they find ways to do those things. I had a great visit with Mr. Manning last night, and that was not a discussion with him, is if someone wants to do harm to your property today, they choose to do that. And so I don't know that having more activity from this, what if you only on that one issue, doesn't make me help that, that people would not, would choose not to because of all the extra activity there, as opposed to bordering in the woods behind your house and waiting for nightfall, you know? I mean, I think, I think there's two ways of looking at that particular issue on that and.
Well, I would agree that the public would be a real deterrent, I would, if there's a lot of, in the daytime. But what it provides is, can we also an opportunity to walk through there and check property out? And that's, that's a concern.
Mayor, if I can, a couple of things that I think the mayor touched on there, and a very important thing for yourself and for everybody. This council has been incredibly determined, and this council and then obviously the previous council of cleaning Dennison up. And, you know, I feel very confident in that this council, we're very cognizant of the maintenance issue, and that's something that weighs heavy on this project, even if we were awarded the grant. And we've worked way too hard to clean up the city that we have, or to the point we have, to then overextend ourselves on a project that we just simply can't maintain. And I do believe that when we get to that point, if the maintenance is something that we're not able to do, we're not gonna go forward with the project.
Well, that's good.
And I, because the mayor mentioned the 2.5 million dollars simply goes for the construction, but, you know, there's no question that there will be significant maintenance costs, and, you know, that's something that we'll take, you know, very seriously, and spend a lot of time working through that.
And how might we pay for that?
Right, absolutely. So, I, but I know, I know we've all talked about that at different points, but just as a general point, that we're very cognizant of that, and we will definitely flush that out.
Well, thank you, that's good to hear. Thank you.
Okay. Justin, to this letter, it's gonna be hard to listen and read this letter now, but we'll have staff send it off to our email, so we will get it, it looks like a lot of good points. Thank you. Next is Linda Shelton, and we still have quite a few here, Ms. Shelton's here.
Oh, I signed that, but I was visiting only.
Okay, visiting only, good to see you.
I visited only.
Linda, is it Richie? And if we would, I mean, because of how many we have left, we limit our comments to about 90 seconds.
Okay.
That'd be great, thanks.
Linda Richie, I live at 860 Lakewood, Denison, and I'm here in support of the project, and I have several employees as well with me from Cigna. And not just that we're from Cigna, but that we utilize your parks, and we're very, we promote healthy lifestyles. And, you know, as we look at this, I think it would look very favorably on the city of Denison to be able to show that they've invested in the park of recreations, and being able to have a public place for people regardless of your social, economical situation, that you can engage in a healthy lifestyle. And I think if you look at the explosion of the 5Ks and the kind of activities that we've been having in our area, it's representative of the fact that people are getting more involved in their health. And walking is a very easy way to do that. You have two trails already, you have Waterloo Lake, which is kind of a different trail for different people, because it's very rustic and it's very challenging. You have the Waterloo Park, which is very nice, but it's a, you know, a little over a half a mile, so to get three miles in a year and go around six times, which is a little boring, but it's also just too, you know, just wide enough for two people. So, when you've got a lot of people out there, and you've got companion walkers, you have to go off the trail. And this being a 12-foot wide trail, being open to bicyclers, I think you're also gonna have another group of activity of people that will want to be engaged. And again, I just think it would look wonderful on the city of Denison, to be able to say that we are re-investing into the health of our people.
Jennifer Switzenberg?
Hello, everyone.
Name and address, please, for the record, and were you able to hear outside for 90 seconds?
Yes, someone. Yes, that's all I have to say, that's all I'll take up. My name's Jennifer Switzenberg, and I live at 14 Ambassador Court here in Denison. We've lived here for about seven years. As a family, and we've seen great things happen. I am actually standing up here as a private citizen, I am fully in support of it. It's going to open at the end of Day Street, very near where I live, easy access for me. Some things I worry about, parking and how people access the trail from that end, but I'm not so overly concerned that I don't support it. I am also here as the acting chairperson for the Parks and Rec Commission, and I've enjoyed serving on that and seeing how things have really developed and changed, and how this master plan has come to be. And this was sort of a dream project that now really can happen because of the funding being there. And so, all of us, I think, you saw submitted maybe two weeks ago, a letter in support of the project. And so, I'm here again just to say I fully support it and very excited about it. I also do wanna say, having lived in places like Austin and San Diego, when you're bored, what do you do? You go outside and do something. So, the health and wellness, to invest in the health and wellness of this community, I think it's a huge step forward in the right direction. Thank you.
Don Bannman?
My name's Don Bannman, my business address is 519 West Main Street. And I'm here in support of the progress and moving forward for the grant. I think it provides great opportunities to increase the quality of life, as council and Denison's worked so hard to do over the last several years. I come here from the perspective of the runner who is at Waterloo on a regular basis, and some of the other concerns about with the trail. It'd be outstanding to have that. I know there's members of the bikers community, there's members of the running community, I know the Parks and Recreation Department is involved with several 5Ks. I think it'd be a wonderful enhancement. You know, I think some of the comments made about the worry about the crime, you know, those who are considering doing it, they're looking for abandoned, hidden places that look unoccupied, that they can hide and do their thing. I think the traffic and the people that would be through there would make them less likely to wanna be there for fear of being caught. And I hope the council move forward and move forward with the grant. Thank you.
Joe Gray? Name and address, please, for the record.
Joe Gray, 1060 Elm Road. I just wanted to say I did speak to you guys last week. I am in support. I do have a couple of questions as far as the future segment of it goes. One was answered a while ago, was that the, really the funding is only for the building. Where will the funding come to buy the properties then?
Right, so, to that end, we, in our project for the actual water line, which was the reason we acquired the KT railroad anyways, to run water to that point, through that project is the, I guess, with the property acquisition and with the property ownership that happens.
Mayor, that's correct. This, Joe, this whole project is, the right-of-way acquisition portion is part of our 12-inch water line that's being installed. So, from the city's perspective, the right-of-way will be required for that water line, whether the trail goes or not. And so, we're gonna be talking to you and, I think, three or four other property owners in detail about the right-of-way acquisition process and how that will work. And that, those conversations will be starting shortly on that topic. Because the right-of-way was required for the water line, we're gonna have the right-of-way anyways, it seems like, and the grant opportunities here, staff felt like this was a really good synergy opportunity to do two necessary things.
Well, so, I'm confused now, we've got the water right-of-way.
No, you asked where the money was coming from for that, that's, did those projects that were...
So, there's already money put aside to take those up?
Correct, yeah.
I guess one of my concerns is that unless we, right now, that's, it goes through a hayfield and another part that we use. We have two crossings, so if we're gonna have to build gates on both sides to go through there, are we gonna be required to build fence ourselves? We also have a large pond that's grounded. I'm thinking of liabilities.
Sure, so, for specific questions like that, when the city engages you on the right-of-way acquisition for the water line, that's when I'll come and visit about those things. What I can promise you is this council is committed to treating all property owners fairly with that. So, you know, we're getting the water to that end of town requires a right-of-ation, so.
Well, I'm glad to know the conversation is beginning, so I'd just like to say we are in support, we just don't understand.
You'll be, it'll be a one-on-one meeting with you and the council. Thanks. Hey, Marilyn Livingston? Anything?
Hi, I'm Marilyn Livingston, and I live at 124 Elbridge, 1224 Elbridge, I believe. But my concern is that, and I will also represent Texas Parks and Trails Alliance, and we have been hoping and dreaming of this for a long time, over 20 years. And we also are affiliated with Rails to Trails, which I'm sure you're aware of. And to speak to the fear of people, and I think it's been said by other people, that when you bring a spotlight on an area, if the criminal element is going to find other places to do their nefarious deeds. So, Rails to Trails supports that. I don't know what company I brought some of the magazines, but Rails to Trails have been going on for years. And they have built trails all throughout the country, and one of the ones that's being built now is in Paris, Texas, and it's gonna be a very, I haven't written it, but I just think that's one of the closest ones that we can look to. But the fact that people who are looking for places to do deeds that, you know, we're not happy to see those people, we need to bring attention to those areas, and they're gonna find other places. And this has been supported in all the trails that have been built, whether, you know, throughout the country. And it does tend to bring the property values up, not down. That's been the major concern for a lot of property owners, and they have found it's just the opposite. It brings the property values up. So, we'd like to see it here, we're excited, and we appreciate your addressing this. Thank you.
James Pelkey? Name and address, please, for the record.
I'm Jim Pelkey. My residence is 3122 Francis Avenue, and my property is at 3109 South Marissa Avenue. And where the railroad is, the railroad track is, I tried to buy that property back from the railroad, and I was told that I could buy it for $6,500, but all it gave me was a deed, and that I still wasn't the owner, that the railroad could come in anytime they want and take that property back and make it a right-of-way. My other concerns are coyotes, wild pigs, and kids. I don't mind the children down there, the kids down there, I mean, some of them have to take care of themselves, and they roam through there. But we have wild pigs in there, and some of the tusks are longer than my fingers. And we have coyotes in there, and every day when I go down in that wood down there, I'm either confronted by the dogs from the north to the property, or coyotes. And I'm worried about the children going down there. And that right-of-way is where the pigs and the coyotes travel. They travel from there over to the other side of 503, and over there is the county, and we can't shoot them in the city limits, but we can on the other side of the road in the county. Now, my concern is $2.5 million for a trail that you could use that $2.5 million for to improve the recreational areas that you already have in place, and fix the streets of Denison, and have potholes big enough to tear the hubcap top in your car when you go through these potholes. That's my concern, and the other concern is safety.
Thank you, did you get that?
Yeah.
And then just wanna remind you that $2 million of that service comes from the feds, so that's not, that's not Denison taxpayer money, it's federal transportation dollars. We can't use those other places.
Right.
Yeah, it's restricted. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Jess Higgins?
Mayor and council members, thank you. Name's Jess Higgins, live at 1229 South Lane Avenue, Denison, Texas. A lot of my issues have been touched on, so I'll just hit the high three. One is the vandalism issue. I think major crime issues along that trail would go down, because you do have traffic there. I think vandalism may go up, just because of the age of users at particular times. Second is, it's an alternative transportation route. What exactly is going to be allowed on this route? Is it gonna be non-motorized only? Because if you start talking about mopheads or motorcycles, you get into some safety issues with pedestrian traffic and such. And third was the imminent domain. My neighbor and I noticed that there was a survey crew out, put a stake out on the property. There was actually about five foot over onto our property line, aside from where the railroad was bedded at. So, I wasn't sure if that's gonna be part of the water project, or whether that was part of this project that had been surveyed.
What I would encourage you, David, could you speak to that already? I mean, you know...
The purchase of the 30 acres from West Day to Spur 503 is under one contract with U.P., and the survey crew has been out in the fall, and they have identified the corners that they could of that property. I don't know that the stake you're speaking of is a property corner, but if it is, then we'll have to have a separate discussion about where that goes, and our survey would have to be engaged. But yes, there has been survey.
So, Mr. Higgins, to your specific, where you think that the flag was put on your property, what I'd encourage you to do, write down your name and phone number, and give it to him, and someone from the city will be tempted to go look at that specific. Okay, Jennifer, or actually, that's a little more. Melody Medina? Jennifer Avenue?
Melody Medina, 24 Jennifer Avenue. I'm a general resident in Denison, Texas, for 43 years. I've lived in the house at where I am now, on Jennifer, for 16 years. I've raised three children there, and they were not once ever allowed to go play down in that area because it's unsafe now. My daughters are grown and coming out of the home now, my youngest is graduating, and she's like, "Oh, no, now they're doing it now." It's gonna be a very, very safe place, I believe. I'm in favor of this project for lots of reasons. I did the homework as a homeowner and resident of Denison to see that the property value would increase. The studies I've read for areas of our size say that it could increase my home value on Jennifer Avenue up to 8%. There are other real numbers that are associated with that, and I'm sure you all know. But far and above all of that, this trail is gonna begin at Highway 691. And what's going on at Highway 691 right now is a really cool thing for our growing senior community, and those seniors are going to have some exercise. It's gonna go all the way to Waterloo, which is going to connect them to something else that they can do. What happens in between, where there are homes or where there are empty areas, in my opinion, will not change much, except it's going to grow. It's going to bring very positive things to those areas. But right now, there are wild animals. I don't think that the danger there will outweigh probably what could be a great thing for our entire region. This will be the very first trail system like this in our region, just like that interurban railway was the first electric railway in our region. And I think that that also continues, that we're making history. We're making something, this is a legacy, I believe it's gonna be for generations to come. And as far as funding, I've looked into a little bit of funding behind at the backside after it's already, after it's already been created. And there are things through Rails to Trails, and there are things through the AmericanTrail.org where we can apply for grants, and there are really great fundraising ideas as well. One of the things that I really liked since this is starting at Highway 691, right by the hospital, is to create a medical mile. And maybe we could have a really great strategic partner with our medical community as well, to help pay for that upkeep. So, I'm with you.
You did mention one point, and again, the potential vision, Carl from MVO mentioned this earlier, Sherman's plan, again, if they were able to fund their project, would come to this corner as well. And the ultimate vision would be that it would connect back under the highway to Gateway Bridge, and that development over there where the Hilton is, the retail, and all of the homes. So, it's a large network eventually. And we have Steve, Aaron or Marklin?
Marum.
Marum?
Well, I'll try to keep it short. I'm Steve Marum, I live at 2619 Rivercrest in Sherman, I know, I'm in Denison. But I'm here to voice my support for the trail, and I hope that, you know, if Denison puts it in the northern part of the trail, we can certainly encourage Sherman to continue it and put in the rest of the trail. And I'm also a member of Texoma Parks and Trails. Our group has been organized over 20 years ago, specifically when we saw this line become a landmark. This is a great resource, and we would like to see it developed. And I believe there's a letter on file that we sent in from Texoma Parks and Trails supporting this effort. this effort. Robert Crocker.
Also a Sherman resident. See, he snuck in on me. I didn't have to.
Yeah, I'm Bob Crocker and I'm a twenty-nine ten in Sherman. But for the last sixteen years, I have worked at three oh-five, I've split it up here and since I get to be up here all the time. I support this effort and I have been fortunate enough to visit several people in Des Moines and during the program, places that have an established drainage system like this. And it works out really nice to be able to get around place to place and take your car, be able to walk where it's shaded and away from the traffic and everything like that. This is just the beginning, but when you see it's finished, it works out really well. So, I encourage you for taking this stuff. And I won't take any of your time other than I'd like to, as I got Texoma Parks and Trails people here. Is someone going to speak from the bicycle group also?
Yes.
Okay, so we got, all right. So, I'll just leave you one other comment, that I believe that parks and green space will form good communities because it connects us to the creation around us and the people around us.
Keith Hartline. And then George Mason, you're going to be next, so through the back.
This is Keith Hartline. I live at twenty-three oh-eight Brookhaven Drive here in Dennison. First of all, let me say, I'm not against, I think, bike path. But I am concerned about the financial commitment that the city of Dennison will have to make, considering our other priorities. I saw that someone compared this project to the KD Trail project in Dallas. This two-point-five million dollars may be a drop in the bucket, considering the three-point-five mile KD Trail in Dallas has run twenty-three million dollars.
Yep.
Now, that money was raised by a group called Friends of KD Trail. And perhaps some consideration may be given to a group here for, to help raise the funds to put in this kind of project. Because when you look at that project down there in Dallas, it's like comparing apples and oranges to what we have here. First of all, it's located in a very highly developed area of Dallas. Three hundred thousand people live and work within one mile of that trail. So, yes, it's popular. It's being used a lot, but it is also very expensive. We have priorities here in Dennison that, you know, some people have talked about the potholes. We have gutters that run along our streets that are filled with debris, dirt, plant life. We have a water and sewer system that's aging, that needs a lot of repair. The water that we have is good to drink, but it's hard on our appliances. We have an image issue. When people come here, the people we want to come here to make this community grow are not impressed when they come to Dennison and see the condition that it's in. And I know the council has worked hard at this, but there's a long way to go and there's a lot of money that's going to be involved. Now, five hundred thousand dollars right now doesn't seem like all that much. Maybe it seems like a lot to me because I think we could do a lot with that and we could make that as a start to take care of some of these problems that we have. But the police coverage that's going to have to be there to take care of the supervising that, that area is going to be another expense that the council is going to have to deal with. There are expenses here, I think, that I really haven't seen really addressed in this public hearing because maybe it's my own ignorance, I should have been briefed a little bit more on what this entire project entails. I think a bike path is a good thing, but I think the city of Dennison right now has other priorities that are more pressing. And I appreciate you listening to what I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Hartline, I would say that your comments are well thought out and that it's that very thought process that the seven of us go through this, this stuff. And to answer some of them, it's not that you haven't heard them, it's that we haven't, some of the answers haven't been fully fleshed out on costs and stuff for, for ongoing maintenance. And as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, this council will not approve a project that we can afford for down the road, not just the upfront infrastructure capital cost, but again, going back to the prioritization and, and maintaining that. So, we'll have to see what, that's one of the things we've asked staff already to begin working on, should this, should we move forward, is to, to make sure we get the answers for these questions tonight and the questions to the council. So, I appreciate your confidence.
I appreciate you too. Thank you.
George Mason.
My name is George Mason. I live at four oh-four West Main Street in Dennison. I've lived here for about a year. I've been coming up there for nearly three years. And I'm really excited at the way things are going in this city. And the trail is just an exciting thing, from my point of view. And as a member of the Texoma Cycling Club, I'm even more excited about it. And I'd like to ask the members of the club to stand up now and be recognized. Our club has approximately one hundred members right now. And we're very active in the, in the area, biking on the streets. We have a lot of new members that come to us every year. We're looking for a safe place to bicycle. This trail will provide that opportunity, especially when most of these new people are not accustomed to riding out in the street, which is kind of dangerous for a new person. So, they kind of get their feet wet riding on a trail that's dedicated to hiking and biking. So, that's a positive aspect to that for us. Another thing is, I've heard concern about picking up trash or monitoring litter on the trail. I'm sure club members would be more than welcome or more than anxious to police the trail pretty likely, pick up litter. I'm a member of the Dennison Crew, who's organized by Donna Dow. I walk the alleys here in Dennison. I pick up the trash once a week. I think I'm making positive influence on it. I can see the same thing happening there. And as far as crime on that trail be concerned, I think during the daytime, you'll find there's enough people using that trail, the crime is going to be at a minimum. Also, I think the kind of people that you're going to attract to that trail are going to be family people, conscientious people. I think it's going to be a great thing for the city. Also, I think it's going to be a great thing for tourism here. And finally, I'd like to say, this is wonderful, that part of the KD Road is going to be preserved and memorializing this trail. So, thank you for your time.
Okay, we've got, I think there's five others that live on Woodland Park and Bell Circle. I know that Justin did a great job in, in kind of speaking, but I want to make sure you have an opportunity, if anything else has arisen, any of you can, can come forward at this point.
I will, yes, I will.
Name and address, please.
My name is Jennifer Gray. I live at eighteen thirty-one Woodland Park Drive. I, we've lived in our house for four years. We were, we, we built our house where it was. We really liked the backyard that we have and we have an open chain link fence that will directly look at and sit about maybe fifty feet from the KD Trail. I have three small children, four, two, and ten months. I don't want everybody walking back behind my house. My kids play out there all the time, my little girls. That scares me as a mom. And I'm very concerned about the police and the monitoring and I'm, I'm wondering if there's any way that we can have some privacy fences put up, a separation between the houses, the residential area and the trail. And if we could put our, we might even put our own camera systems back there to make sure that nobody's coming into our backyard. I mean, I know that there are some neighbors that already, that already look back there and there's coyotes and just all the other wildlife that's already been talked about. But I wanted to state my concern as a mom for my small children playing in the backyard with, open to the public. It's not something that we want in our neighborhood.
Jeff, did you get the screening there?
Yeah.
Is there anyone, anyone else here again, from those, from those neighborhoods?
My name is Doug Williams. I live eighteen hundred Bell Circle. It's me and my wife. We bought that house nine years ago and we bought it for the, for Ron Culbissack, just like Justin and his neighbors, and I fully support all his concerns. And we bought that house because of the privacy in the woods behind it. And that's going to be gone now. I would venture to say that I'm probably the closest one to that track. I could flick a coin like this and get across the track from my back porch. I'm going to lose all that privacy. That's, you know, that's my, that's my selfish motive and point right now. And if there's, I don't know if there's any way, especially around the populated areas that it's close to, if there's any way to re-route that, you know, and still, there's lots of woods behind my house, that'd still be a real nice place to walk. It just don't have to be so close to home. That brings up the security part again. I would not feel safe. And then Mr. Steele will split together a lot because of that. It just makes sugar go up down my spine. But I used to work for the KD and I'm nostalgic as anybody else about the line. I just hope there's some ways, be some ways we can compromise and make the security and the privacy a lot better. Also, one more thing, the proposed water line is coming through. How much area is it going to take, like a twelve-inch water line? How many?
It'll be in the ground and the trail will be on top.
Okay, it's going to be underneath the trail.
I thought it was private property.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought we already had it on private property, but the sewer line.
Okay, that's all I hear. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else here? Mr. Nesbit, anonymous, and Bill. Name and address, please.
We're at Nesbit, eighteen seventeen Woodland Park Drive. Don't want to take up much time, I said a lot of points been made by the people ahead of me, but my wife and two daughters have said we just bought our first, we're building, bought our first home and I've only lived there for about six months now. And I just, you know, I just really found out about this two weeks ago. I was working my backyard and some officials were coming down to, you know, let us, you know, they were doing what they had to do and it was a forum, so it was kind of a shock to me, you know, as I said, as we thought about it, you know, I don't know if we maybe would have built there now, just knowing, because, you know, the woods and the scene behind us is kind of why we picked it, you know, for privacy. And as we are, we're elevated up, we were tameable and it just slowed down. So, any means of trying to build a fence or something would just be expensive or, you know, I said, we weren't planning on doing that anyway, just like I said, because we like the, just the scene and the woods and privacy of what we have back there. Like I said, I have two young daughters myself and just now they're going to be exposed to all this traffic, you know, going on back and forth and so on. But that's where we spend most of our time, that are our, you know, family activities and, you know, togethers and stuff like that. Have any means of escape as a, you know, vacation or lake home or anything like that. So, kind of our backyards are kind of haves that we enjoy. And so, I just wondered if there's any way, like the city, you know, some kind of a fence or landscaping or something to help protect us back there? Because like I said, means of buying my house there was for that reason, the bag. So, thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you for your time.
Anyone else here from Bell? Couple of, yeah, arrivals. Jim Hall? Before we pass everybody to eleven to come up to ninety seconds.
Sure, no problem.
Name and address, please.
Jim Hall, I live at eleven fifteen F M one thirty-one Dennison. I'm going to put a different perspective on this, something that really hasn't been brought up tonight, but I live in Dennison, but I work in Sherman. And, you know, every day I go to work, I get in my car and I drive to work and I feel it's ridiculous. You know, I mean, I'm also a cyclist and I would like to ride my bike to work every day, but, you know, traffic. For me to find a safe route, I actually feel like I need to go all the way around out to fourteen seventeen or maybe two eighty-nine, which a good, a good cut through would be wonderful. So, if the city of Sherman would actually follow suit where the people could actually commute back and forth from Dennison to Sherman, Sherman to Dennison, that'd be wonderful. I'd use it. I'd park my car and probably use it three hundred days in a, a year, you know, if I could. I mean, that'd be just great. The other thing is, is, you know, I, during the summers, I, I get a chance to travel quite a bit. And so, I go to a lot of towns and the first thing I would look for when I go, you know, to visit other towns is, is an infrastructure, something similar to this. You know, I've been to Park City, Utah, Wichita Falls, La Rock, Arkansas, you know, Hill City, South Dakota, you know. There's towns that really emphasize this and it draws people to the towns, whether you're a tourist or whether you're somebody that's thinking about buying a new, buying a new home in that town. And, you know, as I reach retirement age, I mean, there's thoughts, you know, I have thoughts all the time about, boy, I'd like to live in a city that had a good biking, hiking, trail infrastructure. And, you know, I mean, Dennison really needs a trail like this. Sherman needs to connect up with it also, maybe a trail like this. But it's a growing thing with all the communities and everything across the United States. And, I mean, it's something that I, I really, really do support. I think you'll find out that there's a lot of new home buyers out there that are looking for communities that have this type, this type of infrastructure. So, you know, what does that do that, that shifts Dennison in a more, in a more positive light? Six years ago, I was in a, I was in the Dennison Visions, or the Visions Magazine, I guess it is, or whatever. They took my picture on a bicycle out by the lake, or I, somebody took my picture. But anyway, somehow I made it to the magazine and it really irritated me because, you know, it showed, you know, it showed Dennison, it showed Dennison as a biking friendly community, but the time was very, very far from that. And so, you know, I would like to see Dennison move more into the typing, biking, commuting type, you know, use it for all the angels. And lastly, as far as safety goes, and I know that's been brought up a couple times already, I've ridden trails all over the nation and I've never once felt, you know, unsecure or unsafe in, in any of these trails. Wichita Falls just recently completed an entire loop all the way around their entire city. They go through all types of neighborhoods and I've never once felt unsafe on that trail. And, you know, I mean, people who felt like that maybe their house needed to be more secure, they just built privacy fences or they did something to secure their own property. So, you know, as far as the safety issue goes, you know, I'm sure Dennison will do a fine job of policing that also. But anyway, you know, as an exercise enthusiast, I mean, I'm, I'm totally aware of it.
Ted Hayes. Name and address, please, for the record.
Hi, my name's Ted Hayes. I live at twenty-seven oh-four Pre-Savon in Dennison. I live a half mile north of Spur five oh-three and two miles from Dennison, or from Texoma Medical Center where I work. When it's iced up or if I want to ride my bike or walk, I have to walk across Spur five oh-three and then in the opposite direction of traffic on the access road to get to the hospital. And this trail would be a godsend. I would be on it every single day. I understand people having concerns about safety along the trail or the safety of their property, but honestly, I did some research before I came over here to the meeting. There's nothing about an increased crime rate with rails and trails. So, I'm a big fan for it. I don't think it goes far enough and the more you can do, the better. Thank you.
And lastly, we have Laura Price. Please, grab. Name and address, please.
I'm Laura Price. I live at forty-seven forty-one Teresa Drive. That's just there on the south side of where this trail would be. Our property runs up to the edge of the trail, the trail would be right there along the railroad, the back of our property. I'm excited about the prospect of this. I think the idea is very good for the community for many reasons, all of which have already been mentioned. People coming into the community. People coming into the community, making the, the, feel like a community. I'm concerned about how it will affect my neighbors. Will y'all write this up in a way that does them right? This is, a lot of this property is owned by people already. I would hope that they would be taken care of instead of there being bad blood or whatever going into something that could be so potentially good for the area. I'm concerned about whether, whether the area is gonna be turned into a city. Right now, we're county and what that means for the area, for my area, for my property. I could see some positive things having a police force out there where we've had to deal with a lot of theft and motivated by drugs and different things like that. The stealing of those, the metals and stuff in people's property and such like that. See the police force being out there would be positive. But also with the county, you know, giving up our county rights, you know, there, there's things that maybe us as neighbors wouldn't be able to do out there. I'm not sure on all of the laws, the burning guns, stuff like that on your property. I'm concerned about y'all just trying to do your best and respecting the people who bought that property, like, like myself, believing that our neighbors had no intent of selling their property for years and years and years and years to come. And so we've kind of had a nice little oasis down there. I would gladly give that part if everything's well thought out and designed so. But this is a positive thing. I don't know if that was clear or not. Okay, thank you for coming with me.
Anyone else? That being said, the public hearing is closed. Discussion room canceled.
Mayor, I think there, you know, there's obviously a tremendous amount of information that we need to, that we need to flesh out. I know Judge's taking good notes and I know that, that as far as, as this being a green light project, we're a ways from that, from that point. But, you know, I think that, that I feel confident the staff has helped that we'll, we'll work through the issues, you know, and make sure that this, this is a viable project. But the first step before we can do any of that is, is at least making application for, for this, for this opportunity. I think I'm in favor of that.
Motion, counsel?
Mayor, make a motion that we move forward with the seeking the grant.
That motion, councilman Beck?
Yes, sir.
Let's take it from Councilman Hanley. All in favor, by saying aye?
Aye.
Pose like a sign. Motion carries. Before we disperse on this agenda item, again, just, one, wanna thank everybody here for, for going through the process and how you behave during the process. Sometimes we, we have the chamber of school and, and people are, are passionate about their issue but maybe don't always behave in the best way. And it certainly wasn't, wasn't the case tonight. And for the, for the residents that mostly live there in Woodland Park, again, as, as I said, this is not, tonight is simply saying we're moving forward with the grant application. We're gonna get answers to all these questions and have that fully fleshed out if, if we move forward with this at a time in the future. So just know that, that this council and very capable staff have listened to you and we're gonna get those answers for you. So I appreciate all the comments on that. So with that, we'd love for you to stay and go through the other city business, but I have a feeling a lot of you don't want to, so we'll let you get out if you need to at this time. We'll reconvene.
Okay, I get to, is that here? Gen out on three A, remodel of the east apartment.
Thank you all.
Mayor, counsel, Mr. Han, since we're over fifty percent complete with our project, just to give you an update, David Baca, our architect here, who talks much more eloquently and intelligently than I can on the project, what's been done and what's going to be done, I assure you. While he's talking, I'm gonna hopefully be clicking some, a few before and after pictures. My grandchildren may pop up in here, I'm not sure. It'll be interesting how that works, so I'll turn it over to David and I'll be going through these with you.
Hey, David, I know you showed up thinking the crowd was for you, man. I had no show, David. They weren't.
David Baca with David Baca Studio, architect on this project. One of the main things we wanna talk about, as the chief said, it's over fifty percent. We're actually at about sixty-five to seventy percent complete. The main thing we wanted to update you all on are, is one of the biggest concerns that you all would probably have are the cost of the project and any change orders that have come up. So what I did was I put together the list of change orders that we've had to date, which is about twelve thousand dollars worth that has been approved so far. And so I put it out on the site just so you can understand in the context of the overall project cost, what that percentage is. So for a building that was built in the thirties and another addition that was built in the seventies, I think for right now, I think that the change orders have come in well under what they could have been, especially considering some of the, the unforeseen that we have run into. Piazza Construction has been really great to work with about helping to keep our costs down and looking for ways to maybe exchange items for items to, to help us to keep those costs down. But worried about, what we've got approved so far is about one percent of project cost for the change orders. We do have a couple of upcoming change orders that we, we do know of, and so we, I've put those down. There were some mold issues on some of the lower portions of the sheet rock. Eventually, at one point, what the sump pump had quit working and some water had filled up in the floor. And so along the bottom, there had been some mold issues. And that had to be removed when the asbestos was being removed at that time. To put that sheet rock back and also to do it as a green rock so that it wouldn't mold in the future in case that were to happen. Right now, we're approximating that at about two thousand dollars. It may come in less, maybe a little bit more, but what I try to do is be conservative in the numbers and maybe put a number in that was a little higher. And then there was a couple of unforeseen issues. We had some columns located exactly where we were wanting to put a corridor. They were not drawn on the original plan. We actually had a column, we looked at a way to, to span some more steel to span that corridor until another column popped up. And so we took that opportunity to really look at the plan. We created a new layout that actually streamlined the hallway just a little bit more. And that cost to do that, the realignment with the, the hallways is gonna be about fifteen hundred dollars. And that was actually down from just moving, one column was gonna cost about four thousand dollars. So we were able to save quite a bit of money by doing it this way and moving the walls around, around that situation. Down at the bottom, it says changes determined towards another project. Those are, are costs that we already have received for potential change orders. There were some, there was a light over the west entry that had been disconnected at some point and, and the wiring had been pulled and we were not aware of that until I got into it. But because of the way the walls were built, it's gonna cost about twelve hundred dollars to hook that light up. But what we wanted to do is really wait closer to the end of the project to see where we are, to see where we were in change orders to make a determination if, if the police department wanted to move forward and get that light reinstalled. The big item on there as well is, is, in order to keep costs down when we were originally doing this project, say what is it that, what is the, some of the minimum that we can do to really make this project something that the city can be proud of? We looked at a lot of the facade renovations, but we left off the back. And, you know, it's a large stucco building and it has three other sides to it. So we decided to put together a cost estimate on what it would cost if you wanted to upgrade, not the stucco, but to actually paint it a different color that would complement the brick better, rather than leaving the, it's kind of a tannish color with a blue stripe down it. And that's gonna run about one percent of that project cost. So in all, if, if you, if we were to go through and choose all of these of what we have to date, being seventy percent done, and also knowing that most of the change orders come when we start opening up walls and making discoveries, we would still be under three percent of total project cost, which I think is, is a very good number for this type of a project.
What are we budgeting contingency on this?
I believe it was ten percent.
There's ten percent of the project contingency. One of the reasons why we're talking about this is because my commitment to council was we wouldn't bring a change order, we'd bring all change orders over twenty-five thousand dollars to you. Now, we haven't hit that dollar amount, so individuals stand for it. Sequentially, we will be over that number by the time the project's done, just with no change orders or required. And so with respect to that commitment, we wanted to inform council where we are tonight.
So is this, so if we already tapped the contingency, then we're on top of the contingency?
No, no, we haven't, we haven't gone into our whole contingency.
Question?
So, so when will the decision be made on the backside of the wall? Would we go further down or are we already, we're already there because of the good numbers?
That's gonna be a decision that I, that I think the staff may be able to make. Certainly with the exterior, it can be done really at any point, so it may be done within the last month of construction.
I have the budget authority to do it, the budget was adopted because again, we're, well, we're well under our contingency obligations. If you made that personal commitment to y'all, I just wanna make sure that we're working on those compounds.
So as long as we stay in course, I mean, in my opinion, it would be that we would get it backside for sure.
Absolutely.
David, is it any more cost effective to do it now than it is to wait or is, is that cost neutral?
It's, it's really neutral because it's not affecting anything else on the project.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You move your practice to Denison, all those people would have been here for you.
Alright.
Alright, thanks, sir. Gen out on three B, musical public park along Main Street, Miss Dow.
Thank you, Mayor, counsel. You might remember a good while back, we talked about the street skate master plan. And what's happened since then is we've ordered some planners that should be here within the next month. And all of them should be here within the next two months and get planted along Main Street. So that's part of what we've already approved. Something we did on the side, you've approved grant requests in the past and we've accumulated eleven thousand five hundred dollars to go toward musical art. And also in the past, you've approved street skate, having a musical art theme. What we're bringing before you now, the design committee, Don Badman is, is here, stuck around to be here, but he's part of our design committee and they've looked at what we would like to use those funds for. What are our priorities and what would the musical art look like? And so tonight, that's what we're bringing before you. We will place these in the two hundred, three hundred and four hundred blocks of Main and they will be on the north side and the south side of the street. You've got some drums that, that the kids and big kids could play. You've got the yonci is what that's called and, you know, just musical instruments. And then the go-to bells. And so we would be alternating these and sitting on the both sides of the street. At the very far right, let's see if I can do this on, that's what they show on the screen. Is it, at the very far right is the three mid-block crossings. So if you want a little bit more detail on where they would go, we originally thought that it would be kind of, there's a bump out there and we thought it'd be in that area. But that area is flattered and, you know, if we had a handicapped individual in a wheelchair on it, they might not be able to, to sit there if it might roll. And so we feel like the best place is just right on the inside in the paper bed as shown by the red dots in that. That's, basically, we just wanted to answer any of your questions and then also make sure that council was supportive of this.
We have some questions, but please don't post on the, I just wanna get to the question. Why would these not be in a better location in the new city park where the kids' involvement is set as opposed to being on Main Street?
That's a good question and, and I don't, I don't have a specific answer. It's kind of two concurrent projects. And if, for instance, if, if we group them around Heritage Park or the new Pocket Park or anything, there's value in having them kind of grouped together. There's, the Rossborough Museum in Dallas has some that are grouped together and, and that's attractive. What we were trying to do was to add different activities throughout our downtown. And so that's the reason that we selected these. The alternative, because again, we, we obtain these grant funds for public art, the alternative would be to have some more decorative, less playable. And so we just chose the playable. We're getting a, kind of a minor, we're not getting very many. There are a lot more options that are out there. It could be added to any, anything downtown, whether it's at Forest Park or, you know, one of our other areas downtown, so.
What price of cost are we talking, three to five?
What, what I've looked at, and these don't have it online and, and we've had some, you know, we were in training last week and I didn't get communication, but best I can tell, it's gonna be around two thousand dollars each, roughly.
So?
Yeah.
So are we still planning, 'cause I know we had seen when we kind of approved the street skate and I'm going for a minute here for those, these are crazy, if we did something different. We kind of looked at like, and like turning the crossings into like piano looks and then we had like guitar, the decorative stuff. Would that be in conjunction with this? Would that be a phase two of this? Or are, are we going away completely from the decorative? What's your?
I'm, I'm really hoping that we can do that. I don't, I'd be glad to pass on some of the visuals that, that he's talking about.
So this is not an alternative to this?
No, it would be in conjunction.
You may mention and text out one proof, you know, possible.
Yeah, we, we have, we have talked to them. I don't, I really I don't, I really haven't got an answer from specifically, but they care. Let's just say they care for sure. Whether we have the end across what, but there, there are different elements like that, that we still have hopes of and, um, and hope to do in conjunction. This, this is only like a drop in the bucket on what we would like to do, but we, we obtained funding, um, from primarily the Union Pacific Railroad and, and some others. And so, we felt like we could do this and it would be in addition to whatever may come later, whether that's the, the pretty art or, um, you know, something of a more playable nature.
Yeah. And then this come from the Main Street board?
Yes, and specifically the design committee and, and the board.
My, my only question, is, is it enough scale that it's going to make an impact, that people don't understand what the concept is? That's my only, certainly, I like it, I, I, you know, and, and, cause we already talked about a lot of this. I don't know if we talked about playable stuff in the beginning, but I like it. I'm just worried, is it going to be, is it going to be effective in bringing that musical feel to the, to, to Main Street versus the decorative? I mean, people know what the guitar is, I'm not sure they know what the other, the other things are, I don't know.
I could certainly fix that. I could put a bunch of money in the budget for next year. But I, I understand what you're saying.
I, I, I don't know. So, the, we already have the grant?
Right.
To, to be used, do you have some discretion with that, I guess?
We did. If we, uh, when we put in for the grant, it was for public art.
So, as, as the board said, Don, can you come forward too, please? Cause you're part of that, right?
Yes, mayor.
Very big part.
So, so just kind of, I mean, help us, help us understand the thought there of, of what I would call, I mean, where they're located and, and, I mean, is a kid going to be walking down Main Street to play this? Or is it, cause to me, they do look more playable than art for the most...
Yeah, I think they are more playable. I mean, we had a lot of discussions. Uh, I certainly, my, my personal mind liked the art as well. Uh, the playable art, I guess, is trying to play on, uh, Dennison being a musical town. I think we do have a lot more, uh, talented people music-wise. We like to play on that as part of the, the vibe of our city. Um, you know, there's different opinions about where they may be, could be placed. I think part of it being from the Main Street perspective is, okay, we want to draw people to Main Street, you know? And there was some talk about the other park locations. Uh, Forest Park is wonderful. Of course, it's not Main Street, it has its own attractions in terms of being Forest Park, the stadium, and all the new traffic it gets. You know, there are some arguments that all want, as, as, um, Counselor Manley was saying, that makes some impact. I guess there's also a worry too, if you, if it, I know there's other plans and works for the Pocket Park. If it's stuck in one area, do they just go there? Is it, you know, you just don't know. Um, the mid-block was kind of, uh, I think part of a compromise or a thought that it, it does, you know, put an atmosphere of music in the downtown Dennison. I mean, if we had twenty or thirty thousand more to go with it, we could probably make even more impact, but fortunately, we have the blessing of what brand we do and try and make a, a best decision, you know, how do you place that? You know, there's arguments very full, uh, both way.
I will say this, um, so now, you know, during taxes and work a lot of Saturdays and Sundays, uh, and I'll tell you this, there are a tremendous amount of kids that are walking downtown, especially when the weather gets better, you know, when it's turn of March, you know, getting there. And, you know, I mean, there, there are a bunch of folks who, you know, they're walking, you know, they're walking with their, with their families up and down, and, you know, I, so, yeah, I can, I can see the kids stopping playing stuff, um, you know, banging on it and, you know, all that. I mean, I, I can see it, you know? I, I hope that if they, you know, move forward with that, that we can get the decorative part two, because I think it's, one without the other, you know, I, I don't like so much, but I think in, in conjunction, I think it's a really nice atmosphere. Um, just, but we do both versus just one, cause I, I feel like maybe seeing a little bit displaced, but, you know, I think we're going to get the money for the rest of it.
Well, I think it's a star.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's my point. I mean, if it's a star, I think it's good. If it's all it's going to do, I think it'll be displaced.
I agree.
Does that make sense, Don? I'll make a motion to approve.
Yeah, the, so the placement on, on the B here says, consider purchase of placement. Are you, when you're saying, just give y'all direction to placement, or you want us to approve the placement?
The placement, no.
Which is the red?
Which is the red dots on the mid-block crossings, so it's, it's just to the sides.
I see way more than five...
Right.
...dills up there, and we're talking five?
Here, let me, if I can pull this.
Five and a half.
These, these right here on this side, the right-hand side, the far right-hand side are three, and that's the mid-block crossings. The other are the intersections. I'm sorry, I didn't point it out.
So, the green dots is where you're talking about?
Actually, it's the red dots. If you look, there's little bitty red dots to the side of that.
Right here, let your love mouth.
And it would be there at the red dots.
So, the process between the musical instruments will be how far?
Across the street, um, fifty feet, do you think? I would, I would guess fifty feet.
Well, I would, I would second the motion, but just on the fact that, you know, I think we got to leave it up to staff and their opinion, where the item B, that I'm not really having enough, enough, you know, and what the scale of the, of the item is or the placement of it is, and make sure it's, you know, in or out of traffic in the right of way to make sense.
I apologize, I didn't mean that. Right, the, uh, Letera has drawn these in as their recommended placement.
Some of you might be, they are movable, if we might, of course.
Right, that's what Mr. Manley and I were discussing. I brought the, um, the plan.
That's a roll?
It's staffed in, it's staffed in. So, you would, you would put them in the ground and, and it would only go, you know, minor, oh, and it is in the brick paper band, so it would be somewhat easier to replace. But, um, the other would be the, um, I think the drums would go probably in the concrete house.
Put the drum front of Hammond's off.
Uh, well, uh, he's real close to it, and I'm, I think we should put the louder.
That's fine. That's fine. I like activity. Um, I'll make a motion to approve, uh, both the, the, uh, the purchase and placement based on staff recommendation.
Second.
A motion and a second. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Vows like a sign. Motion carries, agenda item four A, public hearing on unsaid structures, this is Floyd.
Tonight, we have four structures up for demolition. The first one is seven sixteen East Sears. On February seventeen, two thousand fifteen, the owner of the property, Olivia C. Loyah, was given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure. Uh, the structure is unsafe and remains a fire hazard. If, this was fire and I believe no damage. But it still remains a fire hazard.
Let's get, let's get, let's get Miss Floyd to break, she's been here since six o'clock waiting for her turn.
It's handsy. So, um, now that we have that out of the way on that one. Okay. Uh, the owners of the property have failed to comply with the notice, and I'm asking council to declare the structure a dangerous structure and order its removal within ten days after notice of council's decision. At one seventeen East Johnson, on February seventeen, two thousand fifteen, the owner of the property, Merlyn Miller, was given notice of violation to repair or demolish the structure at one seventeen East Johnson. The structure is unsafe and is a potential fire hazard. We have problems with egress with the porch, the foundation is dropping, uh, there's holes in the roof, can see the inside damage. Uh, the owners of the property have failed to comply with the notice of violation, and I'm asking the council to declare the structures a dangerous structure and order its removal within ten days after notice of council's decision. At six thirty-one West Arm, this is not a very good picture, but it's the porch that is starting to collapse and deteriorate on this structure. Um, the owner were noticed on February seventeen, two thousand and fifteen, and the owner of the property is Clarence Jeffrey Staff and Deborah Staff, and they were given notice and failed to comply with the notice. This house also has some foundation issues, broken windows. This little structure on the back, which I believe is home of the water heater, is, um, pulling away from the building. Some foundation damage and the siding going bad, robbing. I'm asking the council to declare the structure a dangerous structure and order its removal within ten days after notice of council's decision. And our final property is two eleven West Murray. On February seventeen, two thousand fifteen, the owners of the property, Bank One, Texas Star Bank, Texalma Care, and Taryn Greenfield Estate, were given notice of violation to repair and demolish this structure at two eleven West Murray. Sorry. This structure is unsafe and is a potential fire hazard. Uh, this, this property is open, it's an attractive nuisance, have some roof damage going on there. There's some foundation problems with it. This is what the vandals have done to it. This is a structure in the back of the property that, I don't know when that would call a fire, but it's been a while. Uh, the property owners have failed to comply with the notices. We have record of all violations with the notices and the unsaid conditions of all these properties on file in the building at Code of Sportsman's Department. I'm asking the council to declare the structure a dangerous structure and order its removal within ten days after notice of council's decision. And that is it.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak to any of these properties? There being that the public hearing is closed, schedule for the council. A motion to approve.
Second.
A motion from Counselor Manley, second. Counselor Beck, all of them, just say aye. Vows like a sign. Motion carries. Uh, the council now going to executive session, so to check five five one, Texas Gilmore Code to discuss, uh, public litigation in section five five one dot zero seven one, also to discuss the, uh, city manager position in section five five one dot zero seven four, and also to discuss financial incentives in section five five one dot zero eight seven. Time is seven forty-four, going to executive session.